I'd like to call this meeting back into order. At this time, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have several people who signed up for public comment tonight. First, we have Joe Hamel.
Good evening. Joe Hamel, one of our Auburn police officers is, has a medical problem. And Stephanie Seeger is holding an event on Sunday, June 30th, 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the CrossFit Central Mass at 333 Shrewsbury Street. And what Steph is doing is she's shaving her hair due to the treatments and everything else. And basically, it's a request for everybody to go in and either shave your hair or get a haircut. And she would, in all of her goodness, is contributing all of the funds to the Dana Farmer and the Jimmy Fund. So it's a well, and it's up on the Auburn Police Association Facebook page, and it's a great event.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hamel, for that information.
And there's the $10 to get a haircut.
Next, we have Edie Dow.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll just be a minute.
Okay.
Or three minutes.
Okay.
I came because I want to thank the manager for getting those baby trees braced back up again, and Sharon needs a medal for listening to me. I shouldn't have to call the manager of the town to get whatever department's job it is to do this. No one listens to me at the Highway Department. I'm just a joke there, except for Pat, who's at the desk. She is another one who needs a medal for being so patient and kind. I will call again if someone cuts the ties that are keeping those little trees up. My last thing is what I'd like to say is there are big signs praising Auburn athletes in a few places here. That's good. But isn't it about time that Auburn had signs saying, "Won't you please keep our town clean"? There has never been any signs to keep this town clean that I have ever seen in all the years I've been here. And if it's needed, believe me, I walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Bob Plutukas.
Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. We've had a chance to advertise the town of Auburn positively in the past, and I think it's time again we had a zip trip. And I noticed that they've already started doing some towns over again. They're not going to do all the towns in Massachusetts because Fox Channel 6 doesn't reach all the towns. But with so many new things have now taken place, you've got the Pappas Complex, you've got the Veterans Memorial Corridor is now done, I think it's time to ask, can we be another zip trip as a positive thing and show off the things we've got going in Auburn? And also, the Auburn's Automobile Autobahn, AAA should be a part of that, I would think, because you've got so many automobile dealerships here. It is an Auburn's Auto Autobahn. And the second thing I wanted to mention is almost 10 years ago, I came before this committee, different faces, but still dedicated people giving their time freely, and I thank you for that. You put in a lot more time than a lot of people realize. And I mentioned that we might have a little rainbow and a pot of gold at the end, and that was on Prospect Hill. I did all the research for that. Ed Casanovaich helped me extensively. And finally, we got a grant for $85,000 from the Clean Energy Division. The study is in. It's an extensive study by SED. It's on. Adam Burney was kind enough when I suggested it to put it on the town website. And if you want to find it, I'd like everyone to have a chance to read it if they can, or at least to look at what the proposals are. We do have, it was successful in wind, which is what Milbury would have liked, what Holy Cross would have liked, and a lot of other places would have liked. So it is a little bit of preciousness for Auburn that it's something different, because to get a successful test internally away from the seashore is very difficult. Oh, it's on the website under Planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plutukas. And next, we have Mr. Rick Ringard.
Thank you, Rick Ringard, 288 South Street. It's concerning the Wind Turbine Study Committee, too. What I'd like to ask you to do, I believe you got a copy of some of the information that I sent the Wind Turbine Committee. There's a lot of things to look into here. So what I would like to ask you to do is to make this a much more visible process than it has been. And I'd like to do it by three or four different ways. One is to televise the meetings. I've talked to Mrs. Jacobson. I believe the meetings are going to be televised now, starting Wednesday?
Through the chair. We can figure out when that would start. We're just working out the details with the cable.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The second thing, if we consider putting up a website specifically to this project, a lot of towns do it. Ducksbury has a great one, that people can follow it and see actually what's going on. It's very difficult right now to understand exactly where the whole project is. The third thing I'd ask you to do, and I've asked the Wind Turbine Committee, I don't know if they're going to do it or not, is to put up a balloon so that we know where this thing is visible from. I think it's going to be visible from 15, 18, 20 different neighborhoods in town. It would really help for people to understand what it is that we're proposing if we put a balloon up. And the fourth thing I'd like you to consider at some point when this report comes in, we hired a developer to do the report. In my opinion, it should have been an engineer. With that in mind, when this report does come in, I would hope that you would hire and do a peer review, very similar to what we do with the Planning Board and with the ZBA on site plan approval. When an engineer gives a report, we send it out, and we have another engineer take a look at it. And if you look at that package that I sent, there is a sample report of a study that SED did in Ducksbury. And it's very interesting. There's a lot of different things that we may not think of that an engineer would. So again, just in summary, if you would try to give us some support to make this thing a much more visible process than it is. Thank you.
And we expect to be having a report brought in to one of our future meetings.
Yeah, no.
We'll make sure that you're notified of that.
Absolutely. No, I understand that. But that's the report that I'm asking if you'll consider doing, having a peer report done. Someone else that knows what they're talking about is, as Bob said, that report is this thick. It's very difficult for the layman to know what it actually says.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long is that going to take?
Probably eight minutes or so.
I don't think we should do them before interviews. Okay. The next item we have is Board of Selectmen Items Appointment Interviews, and we have Finance Committee and Zoning Board of Appeals. And we will take them in the order which the applications are in our packets. So for Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Dennis Natoli. And each of you is welcome when you come up to sit here and make a statement, then we'll ask you some questions. Good evening.
Good evening. Looking for a statement?
Only if you want to, otherwise, we can.
I've been on the board, as you know, for a long period of time. Enjoyed it.
Can you pull that mic a little? Thanks.
Sorry. I enjoy the meetings. I make it a point to be there. In the many years I've been on, I very rarely miss a meeting. I'm always there. At this point, I write the decisions for the board. I just find it all interesting. I've been involved with property rights through appraisals and things like that that I have done for years. I'm familiar with the plight of businesses in town, since I do own some. And I'm a resident, so I do know that side. So at this point, if there's any questions, I can answer.
Mr. Grossman, first.
Dennis, you say you've been on the board many years, and we know who you are. How many years?
I believe it's about 17 years.
17.
And is it always? I'm sorry, did you have something else, Mr. Grossman?
No, sir.
Okay, Mrs. Simone.
I have a few.
No, please, go ahead.
I know we've talked several times, and a lot in regard to the time that you've been on the zoning board. So I don't see Mr. Wade here tonight, even though we invited him to come down tonight. So I'm just going to be, I just want this out in the open because I think this is an important question. He was here a few weeks ago, and he felt that specific members, and I don't believe he named any names. If he did, I apologize. But one of the things that he mentioned was he felt that, going before the zoning board a few times, he felt that there was, he was asked to come back unnecessarily. He felt that he was treated less than respectfully. So there's two sides to every story, and since that was made here as public comment, I want to give you the opportunity to respond to that.
Okay. First of all, just when he comes in, I have to recuse myself because I'm going to butter to his properties.
Okay.
Okay. But I've sat in the audience and watched. I don't recall him, anyone being disrespectful to him. I know I haven't really heard the comments, other than just rumors of what has been said, but maybe that the board was not business friendly or something like that. Whereas I think the board pretty much actually has been, and in the past, I think, again, since I've been on for so long, it used to be the opposite. You know, we were accused of, not accused, but just said that we were too business friendly. So what happens in a decision, if you find in favor, everything is fine. Should you not find in favor, then you're anti whatever is going to be done there. But in his cases, I don't even, I don't remember a time that he was even denied any of his permits or even variances. So I think the board pretty much treated him pretty fairly, since he had his, what his requests were made, they were granted. So at that point, we really try to make sure everyone's treated fairly, and I think that's what you have to do. If you treat everyone the same, if someone comes before the board, they know what they have to prepare for, okay? If it's a board that just makes one decision one way, one day, you know, you don't waffle because if you move the target, it hurts the applicant more than anything else. And with the ZBA, it's pretty much written in statute what you need to prove for, say, a variance, what hardships you need to prove, and it's pretty much, I mean, there's been volumes of pages written on a small bit of legislation, but that just goes for the difference of opinions. But it's pretty much laid out what you really need to do, and if you hit those points, I'd say most of the time, you're granted. And there have been many times that we've actually asked someone to, gave them the opportunity to come back. Say if the argument wasn't really hitting the points, we wouldn't take a vote, or we'd ask them if they'd like more time to maybe consult, either if they didn't come with an attorney, consult an attorney, or, you know, they kind of can see where they have to go. We wouldn't, we would give them the opportunity to come up with the argument that they would need. And so sometimes, we'd ask them, you know, maybe you need some more time for this application to really, you know, get all your ducks in a line, say, just to make sure you hit all the points that have to be made. But as far as I can see, everyone's treated the same way. Again, we've, there are times we've been granting all these things, and we're, you know, they say, well, we're not. We're too much for the residents or too much for business. So really, I decided, it's the bylaw, and our main job is to defend the bylaw, okay? We're a little board. That's almost like a little jury, if you will. And again, you have to meet the criteria, and as long as you do, I mean, the board's been really fair. And as far as Mr. Wade, I pretty much think, I can't recall one time he was even denied any of his requests.
All right. You touched on two things while you were talking, so I'm going to ask you two follow-up questions to that before I go. One of the things is you mentioned doing things by the bylaw, and I think that's one of the things that I've learned in the time I've been up here, is that it's kind of like being an umpire. As long as you call the outside pitch a strike for everybody, they're less apt to complain. And I think that's kind of what seemed that that was what Mr. Wade was touching on, that he felt there was some inconsistency. So I'll just, again, that was his argument, but I felt that, you know, it was brought to the public. And you also talked about the business-friendly aspect. And, you know, you know as well as I and everyone else here who reads a newspaper or any other, wherever they get their news, public opinion, a lot of times, becomes the truth for people. And one of the things that I hear is Auburn is not business-friendly. So I'm going to ask you a two-part question. Given that, that seems to be the perception, and I've talked to some of the businesses that chose not to come here, considering your time on the board, what have you done to try and change that perception? And looking forward, if you stay on the board, what do you think could be done better to change that perception?
Okay. One thing I, first of all, again, was fairness. Everyone gets treated the same. Second of all, you know, we've seen some bylaws that needed changing. They were strict. Here's the thing. Any bylaw that you put on a piece of property, okay, is really a taking. And what I mean by taking is it's almost like eminent domain without any compensation. When you put different bylaws on a property, you're really taking a part of that property's rights, you know, or use or things. So we're really careful. I'm cognizant of that. I know bylaws, and the state knows that bylaws can be either too rigid, or, you know, so that's why whereas ZBA is there, to grant relief. But things like the sign bylaw, we've been working on that for years, and we finally got one through. It was 40 square feet was your biggest sign on the biggest building that you could have, which is just too, we're constantly getting requests and actually granting variances. If you're granting a lot of variances, it means there's something wrong with the bylaw because technically, variances should never be granted, almost. I would say if you were to talk to someone who's involved with that, they would say 99% of variants shouldn't be granted because it's very difficult by the criteria. But we've been lenient with that, and we've seen that that sign bylaw needed to be changed. We worked on it for a long time. When adding came in, we actually were able to push it through, and it's a pretty generous bylaw. It works well. Still, even we've granted variances, even from the one that we have here, depending on the need. So we kind of look, again, I'm really, I've studied property rights for a long time, and that's how I consider bylaws, again, as a taking, because it really is. We're telling people that it's zoned for this, and you can't, you might like to do this with it, but you can't. But that's town meeting what decides that. And really, our job is to uphold it when we can, and if the need be, grant relief, and that's what we do.
Okay. I appreciate your candid answers. Thanks.
Is that all you have, Mr. Simone?
I'm good.
Mr. Holstrom.
Dennis, through the chair. Have you been able, in your time there, to be able to be unbiased in your interpretation and presentation of the bylaws to your parties coming forward? And to follow that up, has there been any time, or has there been extended periods of time where you would have to go to litigation because of the interpretation of the bylaws? And what kind of cost that would be to the town?
We haven't gone too much. We've probably had, I would say, one of the bigger lawsuits might have been, say, BJ's. Other than that, other than like Lowe's, where we were actually being sued by another town board, same thing with, say, White's Corner where Bay State is, again, that litigation, again, was also involved being sued internally by another town board. Very rarely do we get lawsuits that are from a decision that's from, say, an applicant. And the ones that we have had, we've been successful in. So I think that kind of reinforces what we have done. We're pretty successful rate as far as, when it does go to court, that we've prevailed for the town. So, and again, that's one reason that you have to do things in a way that is by the book, because we're a small town, and a lot of times, a motion will come into a decision, okay? But if you do everything and you do it properly, should it be challenged in a court? You know, you can sleep at night because if you've done everything right, you should prevail. And I think that's been the record over our board. The only time I can think of that it didn't, I have, say, with Lowe's, I believe we granted up to 15 different variances and special permits for that project. And the one part that the judge thought that might have, that we didn't get through was when they came for their appeal, they didn't wait for the denial, actually, of the building permit, which would have permitted them to then get an appeal to us from, say, the Planning Board. Something like that was more an administrative error by the applicant when they filed. And I read the judge's opinion, and it was more or less of some new bylaw that, not new bylaw, new case law that just came into effect that he used. We were always under the opinion of going with some older case law, I guess. One thing that I've done was get a book, and we've updated this book. It's on the zoning bylaws that really has saved the town, I believe, money just by investing in a few hundred dollars in a book because it actually gives the case law that the attorneys look at. And it's been used by planning, and it's, again, once you have some case law on your side, then you'll prevail.
One other question answered on the chair again. One of the things that concerns me with one of your opening statements was, you write the decisions for the board.
Correct.
What input do you get from the board to make those decisions?
Writing decisions is more administrative than, I don't decide the decisions. Decisions are made at the meeting, okay? We just basically take the decision conditions that were done at the meeting and put it into writing. I mean, it's more of administrative than any kind, it's not my own opinion, it's what we came up with as a board.
Thank you.
Okay. You had one more?
Just one thing with regard to Mr. Holstrom's comments in his last question. In watching some of your meetings, the impression that I get is you're there running the meeting, and you've got the other individuals sitting up here that aren't, having very little input in meetings, and you have total control of the meeting, and it seems like anyone is hesitant to even speak up or say something. That's the impression you get watching the TV?
Okay. Well, a lot of times, I ask for comments from the board, and anyone is welcome to raise a hand and give a comment. A lot of times, when I first present the application, if there's any, you know, I can start by asking the first questions as the chair would do, or you can open up to the board. But either, there is no way in that meeting where anyone is not allowed to give an opinion. I don't know if it's because they've come out already. You know, the first thing I do when I get an application is I do my homework on the application, okay? I research the application and how they file, to make sure they're filed with the correct bylaw. If you watch the meetings, you've seen we've changed them many times because it just wasn't filed correctly. And once that's gone and correct, there's always open to comments from the audience or from the board, whether they choose not to. I don't think it's any reason that they feel they can't or shouldn't. I just, they just don't, most of the time. And I'll ask for comments, and I'll look side to side, and if they shrug their shoulders and have none, then we'll proceed.
So I have a few questions for you as well. So I may have to reword them for, you know, existing members and applicants. And you may have to answer it with your mention of the book. Where do you go to get your information for a hearing if you don't feel you have adequate information going into the meeting?
Well, again, I'll research the bylaws. I'll research, you know, anything from, you know, 41 or 48. I'll research, I'll go in, I'll get the book, okay? I also, through having many courses that I've taken for zoning, I have a pretty good library myself of reference material to look at.
And obviously, are you familiar with the zoning bylaws, and do you feel they need to be updated or changed in any way?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. One problem we have is, especially for businesses, a lot of them are zoned in our aquifer, okay? So what we've done, we have an overlay that actually is not, the bylaw itself is not exactly friendly to what's allowed in that zone. Say, industrial. Most of our industrial is located on a waterway because that's what they did years ago. They use it for power. So you'll find most of your industrial uses, but that's also our drinking water. So the aquifer overlay that says you can't have chemicals, you can't have hazardous materials, but I don't know, too many industries don't have that. So it's always this fight between the bylaw and what they can do with their property. And what I'm getting on that is that where I get on the taking, you actually take quite a bit from those property owners only because now they have a use that's allowed by zoning per the district, but then they can't do some of that because of an additional bylaw that's an overlay. I think I would like to see those industrial areas have, be allowed to do what, say, highway business does, those uses. So maybe an industrial use of a chemical factory is not good to have on your waterway, you know, your drinking water, but how about getting them relief by saying it's okay to have, say, offices because that wouldn't be allowed? So they would, they'd have to come for a variance, and if they didn't have to come for a variance, it's much easier for them to get relief. So I would think about rezoning areas that are in our aquifer, that we're really hurting those business owners in there. They're all, we got a big aquifer. So rezoning that and giving them relief to say, all right, you can't do this, but you can do something that's on highway business or something like that. It gives them more to their property. It makes their property worth more. Again, we're not taking, we've taken some, but we've given them back some, and I think that's something to be looked at.
I wanted to follow up on Mr. Holstrom's question. I had a couple notes here. Is it always the chairman who writes the decisions, or is it, you know, I mean, you've been on 17 years, so what is the?
No. It used to be, actually, when Sue Jolliger was here, she wrote the decisions for us. So when she left, there was nobody to write the decisions, so I took it over from there, and has been doing it ever since. When she left, we were pretty much on our own. We, you know, we adapted, and again, writing decisions, that's just administrative. If someone liked to do it, that'd be great because it takes a lot of my time.
You know, and I absolutely, you know, accept that the decision comes from the vote of the board and the conditions that the board may put on. But do you see it as a problem that if you have to recuse or you're absent to write the decision?
No, as long as it's done on administrative, I think we went through this one time with council just to make sure it's okay. As long as it's an administrative and no comments, you know, or I wasn't involved in the voting or anything like that, should I have to recuse myself? And then the vice chair is actually going to attempt to write the decision, which would be great. Because, again, it takes a long time to write a decision, as you know. I mean, you have to make sure it's correct because that decision is going to be the document that should it ever be challenged, that they're going to go on. So making sure it's it's correct. And it, it takes a long time to get used to, to writing documents for decisions on zoning.
Let me see, I have another question on scheduling, because I do follow your meetings. Has the ZBA ever considered or would they consider going on, you know, twice, twice monthly meetings and canceling that second meeting if not needed? I've watched applicants come before you who, who were continued because they needed additional information. And it goes three months where it could possibly go three weeks instead of three months where you just meet monthly. Do you think that's something that you're, you would be willing to do as a, as being a person being considered for reappointment as well as?
Yeah. I mean, actually, when, when asked, we do, we have done that many times. We've done two weeks if they, you know, if they needed, you know, they need a decision quick, we've had special meetings.
Yeah, but I, I guess in watching the meetings, it's like, okay, we'll continue this to our next meeting. I don't see it offered. So there's just that assumption that they have to wait another month.
Well, I mean, I guess it's just a matter of scheduling. I mean, as far as people's availability, the room availability, there might be issues of advertising, I'm not too sure. But if it's, if it's, if it's continuance, then you really don't have to advertise it.
Exactly.
But it's, when asked, we've always been, we've been accommodating.
Okay.
I don't remember a time, and we've done it many times, where we've ever said, no, we can't do.
Again, I mean, it's, it's your schedule, it's what you schedule. We are the appointing authority, so we have to take everything into consideration. I think that's all I have for you. I just want to make a comment to my board because I took some notes on this. You know, where Mr. Wade had come in and made some comments, you know, unless the board members have seen and had the opportunity to watch the meetings that Mr. Wade referenced, I would ask that you give Mr. Natoli's response the same way that you gave Mr. Wade's comments. Because we have to, we have to see the meeting ourselves. Yes, Mr. Simone?
I have one more follow-up question now to the questions you asked. And I, and, but before I do that, I, I just want to make the comment because I want to be clear. I asked that specifically because in a public forum, those comments were made, and I felt that you deserved the opportunity to address them and give, there's two sides to every story.
Appreciate that a lot.
So I, I just want to be clear on, and, and so you mentioned that you felt some of the bylaws need to change and noted the reasons why. So if you're reappointed to the zoning board, what do you see as, what, what challenges lie ahead in getting that done? And how do you go about making that happen?
Well, bylaws changes aren't very easy. And again, you just need, you know, a lot of, a lot of meetings have to be held, committees have to be looked at, you know, put together to look at the bylaw change. It has to go through the planning board, has to look at it. And then eventually town meeting. But, you know, I've, I've had a couple of other ones put through, just, you know, small ones. And we, we really don't have too much problem with getting them, once they're initiated and getting started, getting the ball rolling. I think it's getting the ball rolling that's the hardest part. Once it does, they, we can actually accomplish something. But again, it's, it's the getting started that's, that's the hardest part. To get everyone to agree that, all right, here's the problem and let's fix it. So, I mean...
Does that just require a majority of your board to get it rolling?
To get it rolling. We start to get it rolling as, as we can put in the, the idea or the application for it to get it done. But then it's, it's a series of hoops that you gotta go through for a bylaw change. So...
Does anyone have anything else? Do you have anything else you want to add, Mr. Natoli?
No, I appreciate the opportunity here to, to speak.
So we, we are holding interviews tonight, and we'll be making appointments at our next meeting, which I believe will go after the first of July. So any existing members will serve until the appointments are made. That's just standard procedure. You're welcome to come back. We'll notify you when we're making the appointments, but they will be made at our next meeting.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
And Mr. Natoli had, I'm sure you're aware, many more questions because he is the chairman, and we had questions regarding that. Our next applicant is Mr. Page.
Good evening, Wayne.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting an update on an incident in town.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to make a statement?
I'd rather answer your questions first and make a statement at the end, if that's all right.
Sure. Absolutely. Mr. Grossman?
On your application, Wayne, you listed that you're on the school committee, the school buildings committee, the ZBA, Council of Aging, and the Urban Housing Authority.
Yes.
That's, between boards and committees, that's five. And I believe in the bylaws, we've asked that a member only partake in three boards or committees. If there were, if you had to change, which one would you step down from?
It would be the school buildings committee because I feel that the way they operate and the way they're running in the middle school project as moving forward, we have a lot of good people on that board. And I think that would be the one I would leave. But I wouldn't resign until after the appointment.
Right. That, that brings it down to four.
Well, I don't know, am I supposed to?
Do you want to look at?
I got two people waving their hands over here. I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
No, no. He asked if you needed to.
The thing is, I think, the only question I would have on that issue would be on the housing authority, whether that would be considered town board or that could, because that has no authority through the charter and town, the town charter, and that is state and federal.
Did you have something else, Mr. Grossman? Mr. Simone?
Through the chair. Same question that you heard me ask, Mr. Natoli. Your, your thoughts, your side of the story, please be candid because...
I will be candid. We have dealt with Mr. Wade for many years. We have bent over. We had worked with Mr. Wade. We have never denied Mr. Wade. And I think the statements that Mr. Wade was, as if you saw the, the zoning board meeting the other night, I had addressed it. I said, I was very disappointed in the way he handled himself, the way he said this, the board was joking, making jokes about him, and the way he was handled. Mr. Wade has got one of the best handlings out of that zoning board of anybody in this town. And every time he thinks he's gonna have a problem, he gets a little upset. But I mean, and I did say that to him. We're not here to make people upset. We're here to work with people, businesses and residents. That night, the prior night, before he came up to your meeting, he had addressed you people. He came to our meeting, and a resident had addressed him whether, whether a resident did come complaining about a drainage problem. So alls we did was continue it, to recommend it, to look into the drainage problem. And then he blew it out of contents. And so there is nobody that went against him. Matter of fact, in the previous meeting, he got the vote four to one in favor. So I don't know why he keeps continuing doing that. He's been at the Board of Selectmen a few times, kind of out of line, I thought. And he talks about other boards. But the last meeting, he came to the zoning board of appeals, he wouldn't even turn his head and look at us at the meeting. He wouldn't even say one word. So I don't know...
Does that satisfy you? I just, I don't want to go off too far onto it.
No, I'll stop right there. But that's...
Yeah. And I would encourage board...
You want me to be candid, I'm being candid.
No, no, no. And I appreciate it. So I, I'm, I'm gonna play devil's advocate for a second.
That's fine.
Because, and understanding that, you know, you and I have agreed on a lot, we've disagreed about, both very passionate about what we do. I think you've done a lot of great things for the town. And, and I'm, you know...
Thank you.
A person who, you know, admires a lot of the things you do. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just throw this follow-up question out to you. What in your mind is different in what Mr. Wade said under public comment in regard to the zoning board than you felt at a housing authority meeting several months ago, people were disrespected, and, and you came here under public comment, and, and you kind of took the same attitude that you felt people were treated poorly. So I think there's a parallel. And I'm just asking, so do you feel that Mr. Wade was, was incorrect in the way that he handled it? Or, you know what I'm saying? You, you both kind of, you both kind of took offense to what a board did, and you've made public comments about it.
Right.
What do you feel was different in how you both handled it?
I feel what the difference with that was is I, I was factual in what I was talking about when I had my discussion about the Urban Housing Authority, and I will stick to that forever. I do not think Mr. Wade's decision to come up here and say what he said was factual. There's a difference. Mine was factual, his was not. This board has never, ever, the zoning board of appeals has never, ever voted against this man on anything he's went forward with. They tried to help him, and then he gets a resident come up here complaining about drainage, and he goes off the wall. I can't do that, and I can't predict that. But a fact is a fact. And that's the two differences.
I, I just wanted to get your take on it.
No, that's fine.
Last, last question.
Yep.
Again, the same thing. The perception of Auburn not being business friendly. How do you, what, what, in the time you've been on the zoning board, what have you done to address that, to try and change that perception? And if you stay on the zoning board looking down the road, what will you do to change that?
My thing is, a lot of the businesses say we're not business friendly, but we really are. How many businesses can you say in the last five or 10 years that have been denied from the zoning board of appeals? We work with businesses, we work with residents. We got, residents have just as much as rights as the business do, and the business have just as much as right as the residents do. That's why we had the problem with Mr. Wade because a resident got up and spoke up because he was having problems with, with the business, with the area where the business was. It wasn't because of the business itself, it's because there was a problem. But we, we want to work, we work with everybody. It's case by case. Somebody can come to you and say, well, his sign is bigger than my sign. Why did you let that go? There's different circumstances on every issue you deal with, with each individual case. None of them exactly are the same. None of them.
And, and lastly, so, again, and you feel that you've handled it with consistency, no matter who the person is sitting in front of you?
I do. I believe I do.
I appreciate you being candid. Thank you.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Good evening, Wayne. Have you had a chance to actually review the current bylaws? And can you interpret and present those bylaws to the parties involved with an unbiased decision?
Oh, definitely.
Now, is there a case where you have ever, well, you receive information on a zoning board issue before the meeting begins? Are you able to make decisions before you go in? Or do you wait and listen to all the facts being presented before decisions are made?
Oh, no, I have to wait and see. And sometimes, sometimes I have addressed the board over the years I've been on it and applicants to, uh, give us a continuance to our next meeting because I have not seen enough to make a proper decision. I do not come in to a zoning board meeting and say, I'm gonna vote for this and vote for that. No. The only reason why I would, I look at the stuff that's in front of me. That's what I look at. But when I, sometimes I get to a meeting, and all of a sudden there's four or five things show up in front of you, and you haven't even looked at yet. I want to make perfectly sure that I know what I'm talking about and what I'm looking at before I make a final decision. And if I'm not willing to make the decision because I'm not comfortable, I will say that.
One other question to follow up with what I spoke with Dennis. He does write the, the chairman does write the decisions. Do you take a big part in that decision-making process? And is it reviewed before it is presented to attorneys or to the, the parties involved?
Well, what happened just recently, which I think is a good, a good thing personally, is that Nick, the, the one that's the head of, that does the zoning, is doing this, they're getting the decisions drawn up and starting to show them to the committee before we approve them. We did not do that in the past. But that's something that he's brought forward to the committee, which I agree with. And, I don't know, does that answer your question or you want me to go a little more on it?
Well, I guess that leaves a concern that if the decision is being drafted before it gets to meeting, it's kind of like you already have it pretty much set in stone.
No, 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 excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We've already made a decision, everything, the draft comes back to us after the meeting was, took in place in the prior month. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else? I'm gonna ask you the same questions I asked Mr. Natoli. Where do you go to get your information when you feel you don't have enough information going into a meeting?
I go through the bylaws. I go up to the town hall. They used to have courses a while back at Holy Cross. I used to go to them. Basically, that's where I get my knowledge. If not, you can go online for some stuff through the state. I mean, there's a lot of good avenues to go through. But the main, major thing is, is you're gonna keep getting updates from what you do year to year because the bylaws change. Every time we have a town meeting, we get new bylaws, or bylaws are addressed. So you're always gonna have some kind of paper trail from year to year. I'm not, you may need it in six months because that's how much the laws change between a state and a town.
Okay. I know the board, I understand the board sets its own schedule. But would you be willing to meet twice a month, to have a set schedule twice a month, and then if that meeting isn't needed, cancel it so that applicants aren't waiting, you know, if they're continued twice, they're now waiting three months, and then they have, they wait for the decision, and then they have to wait for the appeal period? It could be up to six months if you're reappointed. Would you be willing to meet twice a month?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't think having to recuse yourself is an issue. And I missed this question from Mr. Natoli. Is it a requirement that an attorney provide a brief with a ZBA application? And if, if it's not, do you give more weight to an application if it has an attorney's brief attached?
Well, you do to a point. You've got to remember that attorneys come up before us are not up here for the town or the bylaws. They're up here representing their clients. So do I look, I look at any information that's put in front of me, whether it's a lawyer, whether, even, even a resident come up with a letter, and I will look at that letter and take merit out of everything. I put everything together. And, and the department head meetings is another one that we need to look at quite a bit. And I think we need more work with the department heads and more with the code enforcement officer that we haven't had in the past. Matter of fact, I made a decision the other night on a vote where I possibly would have voted no on the decision, but we had a lot of problems with code enforcement and stuff like that prior to that. And I had talked to the one that's doing it now, I don't know if I can give their names, but as far as that goes, but, and felt comfortable with moving on that these bylaws are finally gonna be addressed. If somebody's in violation, they're gonna be taken care of where in the past it hasn't been so. And I think it's gonna be where all these departments are gonna work together to make this work for the town. And both the residents and the businesses. I mean, that's what we're here for.
And I know you've kind of addressed it, but I just want to be sure I ask everyone the same question. You know, you are familiar with the zoning bylaws. Do you feel, without getting into a lot of detail, do you feel they need to be updated or changed in any way?
I think it's always good to look at the bylaws every year, to see what's working and what's not working. And address them little by little until we get, I would say, a hard copy that really works good. And then maybe go down a few years and then revisit the thing again. Just like you have a five-year plan for certain things you do in town, CIP and stuff like that. And I believe there's always room for improvement. And we learn from our mistakes.
Okay. Did anyone have anything else? Did you want to sit? Oh, you do, I'm sorry.
I have one more.
Mr. Simone?
I wish I had asked this, but anyway, every single person in the three-plus years that I've sat here who's come before us for any kind of appointment, one common thread has been preaching the teamwork. And in, and in some cases, we appoint folks, and then the only other time we ever see them is town meeting. Specifically, if you're reappointed, what do you think needs to be better?
what do you think needs to be better in the relationship as a whole between the ZBA and other boards and committees that they touch, and how do you make that better, if you think there's things that need to be improved?
I think they all need to work together. I think we're starting to move slowly in that direction. I mean, we just got a new town manager recently, and everything's been switched around. Departments have been put together, this has been put here, that's been put there, and now that is simmering down, I think you should have all these departments working together hand to hand.
But specifically between the boards, is there anything, is there anything you guys could do better to work with us? Is there anything we could do better to work with you, or any of the other boards or committees that you have to deal with?
Well, I think I've seen some of that already, through the boards that we didn't see before. Like the code enforcement officer, we had a lot of problems with getting things taken care of. But now, I've addressed some things, my personal self, as a board member, have addressed things with a code enforcement officer, and it's been acted on. It's changed there. It's starting to work. As far as the code, as far as he goes, I can verify that, because it's worked, where it hasn't in the past. I think we all can come together and build, build, keep building Auburn in a better way, for the residents and the businesses. And all is going to work together.
Okay.
Did you have anything you want to add?
Just that, I would say, I put my best foot forward, as I always do. I'm always straightforward, whether you agree or disagree. I say it like it is. I could take criticism as well as give it, but the one thing you'll get from me is the truth. I don't lie. I will tell you anything you want to know, whether you agree or disagree. And I've always been that way, and I was always do that moving forward. And I love helping people. As you know, I'm on other boards that I totally love and would never want to give up because of that. I don't know, I think I work very hard for the town of Auburn and the people in it, and I want to continue. I have a passion of helping people. That's my opinion. And hopefully, you'll consider that and consider me for reappointment.
Thank you for coming in, and as you heard, we'll be making the appointments at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And next, we have a newcomer. Hope we didn't scare you away, Megan Roach. And Megan, before, before you start, I just wanted to, no, please, sit down. You know, I just wanted to make a brief announcement. There is breaking news right now happening in Auburn that we'll be having the Boston media as well as the Worcester media in town. There was an accident with a WRTA bus that went into a home in Auburn. The police are on scene, fire department is on scene. The town manager is getting updates as we speak. They're out, everyone's doing their job, and we will keep all those involved, because there have been some victims. We will keep all those involved in our thoughts and prayers. So, if you see the local media, it's the accident here in town. So, welcome, Megan. Hi. So, you've put an application in for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Did you want to say something first?
I guess I'll field questions first, and then say something at the end of anything that we missed.
Great, thanks. Mr. Grossman.
Megan, as an applicant and being new to any office, I believe, you haven't held any other offices in town before.
I have not.
What do you feel that you can bring to the board that you don't see is there now, or?
Well, first of all, I have always been interested in zoning stuff. Hearing the other two gentlemen before me, I was actually excited. It's kind of interesting stuff. I know most people probably don't feel that way. But I am very attentive, I pay very close attention to detail, and I think I certainly can bring maybe just a fresh pair of eyes, maybe some new ideas to a board. I'm not sure when the last newest member was put on the board, but sometimes I think when you mix it up and have someone new, maybe I can certainly help to have the town boards work together and get more done for the town.
Did you have anything else? Mr. Sismonian.
Outside of the application that's in front of us, which is pretty basic, what is the skill set that you believe you have that would benefit the ZBA and the town?
Well, I'm a real estate attorney. It's what I do for a job. I've been practicing, it'll be 10 years in December. So, I don't do personally a lot of zoning work, but I've probably read 300 sets of bylaws for every condominium in central Mass. So, I think certainly just having that legal mind that's used to sort of looking at things and saying, well, what could go wrong? What could be the other side of this? I think that would certainly be an asset. Zoning is something that I've been interested in for a while. I live in Auburn, I grew up in Auburn, so the town itself certainly poses an interest to me being a homeowner. And I guess I just think that I'm certainly someone who will be at every meeting, will absolutely put my best foot forward, and will do anything I can to help the board. I'm a team player. I'll listen to meetings, I'll stuff envelopes, I'll do whatever I have to do to help the board to get done whatever they need to do.
Mr. Sismonian.
Through the chair. Have you, have you watched a lot of the ZBA meetings, familiarized yourself with how the board works and what they're responsible for?
To be honest, I have not watched a lot of meetings, but I do understand what their responsibilities are, although even just after listening for a brief period of time tonight, I've learned so many things. But certainly, being new to anything, you know, there certainly would be a period of learning experience, and I'd certainly have to lean on some of the other members to kind of educate me as to how things go. But sometimes I think that can also be a good thing. I'm kind of going in there with no expectations, no biases, to just do my job as totally unbiased member of the board.
Nice segue to my next question. You, you mentioned the learning aspect, so with, with everything, there's some learning curve. What, what is your, what is your style of giving that learning curve? How do you jump in, make an impact, try to identify ways to improve things, or, you know, facilitate the board moving forward?
Well, since I went to law school, I read, 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 read. So, certainly, of course, reading, reading the bylaws, maybe borrowing the book that Mr. Nattoli spoke about, if he'd be willing to share, just to kind of familiarize myself with things that they see. For me, that is usually my personal style. Of course, attending the meetings, attending town meetings. I do believe, I've attended a few town meetings, we did a few in high school. I graduated from Auburn High. We did a few town meetings in high school. So, just participating, learning, reaching out, asking people for help, contacting people to say, hey, look, I have a question on this. Can you sort of explain to me how this came to be, or why you think it should come to be? Using all the resources.
Okay. Last, last question. So, you heard me ask this twice, I'm going to ask it in a slightly different way, since you're not a sitting member of the board, but there is, there is the perception of Auburn not being somewhat business-friendly. What do you do to change it?
Well, this is the first I'm hearing, that Auburn isn't business-friendly. But I guess that what you would have to do certainly is to be sure that when businesses are looking for help, or variances, or things, I think you have to keep a totally open mind. And I think you, obviously, you have to consider, is that what is going to be best for the town? Certainly, it's an advantage for the town to have businesses here, bring people in and bring income into the town, and you want business members to want to stay here. You don't want them to take their business elsewhere. So, I guess I would say to really stay focused on making the best decision for the town, regardless of anything else, business or individual.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
No? Okay. I'm going to just ask you a couple of questions, and if you were appointed to the board, where would, where do you think you would go for information prior to a meeting to be well-informed going into a hearing?
Okay, well, I believe we'd see the application before the meeting, so certainly look at that. If there was questions about, you know, was it filed under the right bylaws, certainly look them up. And of course, the bylaws itself. I'm a big fan of booklet, so I probably would laminate the booklet and carry it around with me.
When you put in this application, I assume it was your understanding that the Zoning Board of Appeals met once a month on Thursdays. If the board chose to change their schedule to accommodate applicants, would, would it be a problem for you to attend to meetings a month?
No. Actually, if it wasn't raining, I would have walked. I literally live like right around the corner.
And I asked Mr. Page a question about whether it was a requirement for, for there to be an attorney's brief attached to an application. I've watched many of their meetings, and frequently, there are briefs with, with the applications. Could you, could you give an applicant who has not hired an attorney and provided a brief the same open mind that you would?
Absolutely. We're expensive. Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And my last question, you know, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to familiarize yourself with the zoning bylaws. Do you feel they need to be updated or changed in any ways?
I guess I'd have to reserve comment on that for now. I, I can't speak to that now.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Did you want to add anything else?
No, just, I grew up in Auburn, I've lived here my whole life. My parents live here. I finally bought a house here, and I'd just love the opportunity to be on the board.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming, and we'll be making our appointments at our next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And next, we have Lawrence Chacolo, and I hope I pronounced that right. Welcome. Did you want to make any, any statement, or did you want to answer questions first?
We can go with the questions first.
Absolutely. Mr. Grossman?
Go with my same question. I just asked, as an applicant, what do you feel you would bring to the board?
Been here in town for approximately 20 years, and have come to the point where I think it's time to try to be involved with my town. What, what I have that I think is fairly unique so far is that I've been in the private sector with my own businesses for a good portion of my life, but am now a couple of courses short of a Master of Public Administration. Seeing the public side of things and the private resident side of things, I think that's a good perspective.
Did you have something else? Mr. Sismonian?
Good evening. Again, skill set outside of the basic information that you believe would benefit the ZBA and the town?
The answer that I just gave to Mr. Grossman.
All right, let me ask, I think Mr. Grossman's was a little more towards your experience, kind of life experience. I'm more looking at specific skills that you believe would be an asset to the board.
In mitigating any circumstance, I do that on a daily basis, as I interface with most major multinational corporations when they are looking to get things from the company that I work for. I currently manage a group of high-touch technical engineers, and as the interface between the technical engineer and the customer in many instances, which is a large multinational corporation, I'm able to pretty well put each party on the right course for remediation of their issues.
Okay. Are you familiar with what the zoning board does? Have you watched some of the meetings to kind of get a feel for?
I have watched too few to mention truly.
Okay.
But I am familiar exactly with what they do, yes.
Trying to go?
No, no, take your time.
And, again, same thing. How do you change, how do you change that perception that some people feel? And again, I want to be clear, I am not in any way, shape, form knocking ZBA, anyone else in town, but as I said, there's not a person here, reads a newspaper, gets news off the internet, doesn't know that. Sometimes perception becomes some people's reality. So, how do we change that?
And I, and I think what you just made, that statement is absolutely true, for the better part of the residents in the town, that perception is reality. I, I think that on a case-by-case basis, there would need to be a strong, hard look given to anything that would benefit the town, always within the parameters of the bylaws. But a strong, hard look given to if it could be beneficial to the town and have very little impact to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, actually, yep. I'm sorry, the one last question that I had. Again, given that learning curve, what's your philosophy, or what's, what's your way of doing things that, how do you jump in, if you're appointed to the ZBA, how do you jump in and make a difference, work with the other folks on the ZBA to, you know, effect some change where it's needed, if you feel it's needed, or have those discussions with the other members and say, hey, I think there's some, these are some things we can improve on?
That I think I am good at, in communicating with my peers. As far as any particular problem or petition that comes on the agenda, being that I would be potentially a new person on the board, I would definitely do my research, and hopefully, time would permit me to actually drive and view the property itself, because I think that gives anybody a totally different perspective.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything from the other members? Being, if you were appointed to the board and you're a new member, where would you look to, to get information for an application if you had additional questions either prior to a meeting, or if a meeting was continued?
I would go directly to the bylaw to do my research, and then, even though it may seem strange, I would probably seek some advice, being new, seek some advice from a professor that I, I had my master's degree courses, who is currently a town manager. I won't say what town.
And I know when you put in your application, you know, it was your understanding the Zoning Board of Appeals meets monthly. Would you have a problem to me, if the board were willing to change their schedule to accommodate certain applications, meeting twice a month?
If it were on the same night, I do have other commitments on other nights. If it were on the same night, I have no problem.
And I, you may have heard it mentioned that, you know, the question about attorney's briefs being attached to an application. Could you give this, give an application the same fair, objective weight that you would an application that did not have an attorney's brief attached?
Most assuredly.
And I should have asked everyone else, the two existing members know this, but any new applicants don't. This is a regulatory board, that the appeal can go to the courts. Does that concern you at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. As, as a private businessman throughout my life, for good and bad, I had to appear before the courts, whether it be to seek something I wanted, or to collect possibly monies that were owed me.
And, and, you know, as this board and any other board knows, if, you know, if someone appeals a decision to the courts, there may come a time that you, you are deposed, and I just wanted to be sure you weren't uncomfortable with that.
I have no problem.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything? Did you want to say anything else before you?
Only that I came to this area in the Only that I came to this area in the mid-sixties. I graduated from Holy Cross, as I told you, I am a couple of courses shy of my master's of public administration, I have been in business, I currently work for someone else. I do, I do work from home, so I am available during the day for questions, for answers, because I work from home.
Thanks so much for coming in. And our final applicant is Mr. Jeffrey Murray. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening.
Did you want to say anything, or did you want to answer questions first?
I think I'll defer to the end of the questions.
Okay, Mr. Grossman?
The same question, except I'll make comment to some of the, what you, information that you gave us on your application sheet, as far as background and experience. As an applicant, what do you feel that you bring to the board as far as expertise is concerned?
As far as the expertise that I bring to the board, I've been a contractor and involved in building and contracting for pretty much all of my life, I grew up in a family business, I've been employed in that line of business for about 30 years, or more, and during that time period, I've been an applicant, I've been involved in the design, application, appeal process through that period of time, and I think I could bring some assistance to the board in doing what the board is charged to do, and that's have the appeals of the building inspector, a zoning enforcement official, and uphold the existing bylaw and the mass general laws.
Mr. Simonian?
All right, you get to go last, see the benefit of hearing all the questions, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw you one little change up. I think, I think you kind of addressed your skill sets, so let me ask you this, nobody knows better than you what your positives and negatives are, what's your biggest positive that you think could be an asset to the board? And what negative do you think you would have to overcome to be an effective member of the board?
I think one of the biggest positives, I'm kind of an analytical thinker, and I think I can be impartial with hearing appeals or taking a look at what's in front of me, and I think I have a pretty good understanding of the existing bylaw and the fact that the charge of the board, again, would be to assist property owners or businesses in realizing the maximum use of their property and their livelihood within the bylaw or the existing regulations. And as far as, as far as any negatives or any drawbacks, the only thing that I could really think of is, as my family does own some commercial property in town, potentially the existence of a conflict at, you know, on a limited, on a very limited basis.
Fair enough. So, same question I asked, how do you, how do you, how do you jump right in and make changes where you feel they're necessary, or work with the other existing members to try and do some things differently if you think they could be done better?
Well, I think one of the most important things, having been involved in political positions in town and policymaking boards, that one of the most important things is, you know, transparency and open, open honestness with any of the actions that are taken, and taking a close look at what, what those policies are, and trying to uphold those to the, for the best of my ability.
Okay, and I think that's pretty much it, because as far as familiarization with the board, you said you've watched the meetings and you are-
I've been a participant-
And have a good understanding of the bylaws, so-
In other towns as well as Auburn.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry.
One more?
The one question I asked everybody else, I gotta ask you. The perception of us not being business friendly, if that's the case, how do you change that?
Well, that's a difficult thing in Auburn, I am aware of the fact that, you know, that the zoning, just because of the way that it took place, is somewhat fragmented in Auburn, so it's a difficult thing to do, but with, you know, with an unbiased look at, at things, I think, you know, Auburn can kind of bring itself to a business-friendly environment without, without overstepping bounds from what the existing regulations are. If those change, Auburn may in five years not be the, may not, where a bylaw works now, may not, may not work then, so those are the kind of things that need to be looked at, and again, because zoning has been fragmented the way it was implemented, sometimes there are, there are some changes that need to be made because of, because of some needs or some changes that take place.
When you say the zoning is fragmented, you mean as far as the town?
As far as the town, there, you know, there's commercial industrial properties that start residential areas all over town, and that consistently presents problems when you're intermingling commercial or industrial operations with residences.
All right, thanks.
You just stated that you're familiar with the zoning bylaws, do you feel they need to be updated or changed in any way?
That, again, I think I kind of touched on it, that that may need to take place in the future, again, some of the regulations that are in place now may not, may not work five years from now, 10 years from now, but I think that kind of becomes apparent, and with new applications, that as far as variance or special permits, or that's something that may, may become apparent at a later date.
Okay, as a new member, where would you go to look for information to prepare for a meeting, or if you have additional questions, if a meeting is continued?
Obviously towards the existing bylaw, town bylaw and the CMR.
And the same question, when you applied, you know, it was your, it is your understanding the board meets once a month, would you have a problem meeting twice a month if the board chose to change their schedule to accommodate more applicants?
No, absolutely not, and I think it, I think that would lend assistance to being, becoming a, lending, lending to the appearance of a more business-friendly environment as well.
Okay, and I know I just asked one other applicant, this is a regulatory board, that the appeal goes to the court, do you have any concerns or issues that you, you know, you could potentially be named in a lawsuit in an, in an appeal?
No.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else from Mr. Murray? Jeff, did you want to say anything else before?
No, just thanks for the opportunity to-
Absolutely. We'll be making our appointments at our next meeting, you're welcome to be here, or we will be notifying everyone, and thanks for waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask for a very brief recess?
Post a recess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Like to call this meeting back to order. I'll entertain a motion to move up item 9A.
It's all moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, yes, thank you, and I appreciate you moving the item up, and thank you for your patience, Barry and John. I just wanted to introduce Barry Lorian from Mass DOT, who's going to be speaking, and then he will be introducing John, but just quick background, the board, I believe in 2011, had given us approvals for, had actually given approvals to Mass Highway at the time, now Mass DOT, for signage to the airport, I believe there were three signs along the Oxford Street route, and the board approved that with the understanding that Mass DOT would come back a year later and give their numbers. At the time, Direct Air was servicing Worcester Airport, and by the time the year went by, and they came back and gave their numbers, Direct Air had already gone out, so the numbers really, I'll let Barry explain it, but they did come back and give their numbers, and the board voted to let the signs stay another year, so I believe we're here again today to give you an update and on the signage, on the traffic, and on JetBlue, and then to ask for your approval to keep the signs up for another year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Barry Lorian from DOT, thank you.
Thank you, again, my name is Barry Lorian from Mass DOT, the District 3 Officer in Worcester, here with Mr. John Kujovic from Massport, and thank you for that introduction, you covered a lot of the material I wanted to already. But in terms of the traffic volumes, we have been monitoring them, and they haven't changed over the past three years. We're, the volume, we are currently running on Oxford Street North is about 14,000 vehicles per day, and that, that number fluctuates, 100 or 200 vehicles depending on when we took the count, but essentially, the volume has stayed the same. With the good news that JetBlue is coming to Worcester Airport, we have decided to increase, or become more aggressive with our monitoring program. So rather than collect counts once a year, we've decided to collect counts once every three months, beginning in July, so we'll have a July count, an October count, probably a January count, and then we'll continue every three months. We'll be able to use those counts and correlate, perhaps correlate, any increase in the Auburn-Worcester route, or in any traffic volumes along Oxford Street North with some of the JetBlue flights. The counts we're able to acquire, give us hourly counts, and knowing the schedule for JetBlue, we'll be able to look very closely at the increased change, maybe decrease, we don't know, in traffic volumes in Oxford Street North, and try to make some correlation between JetBlue traffic and, and traffic volumes along the route. We intend to provide that data every three months to, to the town for your use, and if you'd like us to come in and speak about those numbers, what they mean in relative terms, we're happy to do that. But we are here tonight to request that the board allow us to, or allow the three signs along the Oxford Street North to remain in place, three existing signs to remain in place for another year.
Do any members have any questions or comments? Mr. Simonian?
I guess my only comment is that I would definitely support it, given the fact that JetBlue coming in will be a significant change, so I would absolutely like to see those quarterly numbers.
Okay.
Anything else? Did you have any?
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, I think the importance of the signs is it's guiding people to stay on the main road, you know, the GPS is now, people look up directions to the airport, there's a lot of opportunity for them to get sidetracked into the, into the smaller neighborhoods, on secondary roads that really can't accommodate that, so by keeping them on a main road, we're not taking any more cars and forcing them onto that area, they're going that direction anyway, it's just keeping them on that road and keeping them out of the neighborhoods with the roads that just can't handle that type of activity.
They are confirmatory signs, absolutely, to keep people on the route that they were destined to use already.
And I think as far as the, the update on JetBlue, we asked John Kujovic from Massport to come in today and talk to the board about the update on JetBlue, and to give us some, some estimates on what the traffic counts would be, when indeed they do start.
Mr. Simonian?
Based on that statement, I'll, I'll hold that question, because that's what I was going to ask, if you had any kind of model or that would estimate.
So if we, if we extend this for a year, and JetBlue's, what is expectation is November, will that, will that six months give you, will you begin tracking those numbers immediately, and will that give you adequate time to provide us with a report?
Well, what we're really looking, yes, it will, it will, and what we're really looking for is trends in the data, so we wouldn't want to make an assumption based on, based on one or two data sets, we'd prefer to go, you know, at least two, three, or four, I think, sets of data when JetBlue is operating. Of course, if there is a significant jump in those numbers, we'd want to come back and speak with you, but I think it is fair that we, we take, you know, two or three traffic volume count while JetBlue is active, so that we didn't see just a daily spike for some other reason.
So you'll be able to get all those traffic counts in that six-month window?
Yes, we intend to go every three months, so July, probably October, January, and then again in probably April.
Okay.
And we can increase that program if the board's requests.
Mr. Simonian?
Well, yeah, just, just an observation, I guess, I mean, if, if the traffic does increase, there, there, we can't, we can't stop those people from, from cutting through Auburn by any stretch, so in cases where, I'm sure we're not, first time something like this has happened, you know, is it, is it more signage, or, you know, what, what has been done? Because, you know, that would, I'm sure that's going to be the question, if, if the traffic does significantly increase, what do we do?
If the traffic volumes increased, and John can speak to this more directly, but if the traffic volumes were to increase, we would be looking at, you know, perhaps worst-case scenario, as much as 100 vehicle trips a day. When we've got 14,000 vehicles already on that road, and we add 100 vehicle trips, you will not notice a difference, you know, the average person will not notice a difference, so I, I think we're very comfortable that even under the worst-case scenario, there will be no perceivable change to the average person.
That's, that's the number I was wondering, because I heard you say the 14,000, so I was wondering what that estimate might be, that's, yeah, not that significant.
Did you have something else? Did you have anything else?
I think if John could explain the JetBlue issues, and then I think they're going to work together on it.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm John Kujovic, I'm Deputy Director of Airport Planning for Massport, and the town manager had asked me to, to give you an update on JetBlue service, and also if we had some thoughts about what airport-related traffic might be on the Auburn route, and what I can say is that it's really going to be minimal, based on our traffic modeling assumptions that we used when we came before you the last two times regarding Direct Air, and there are a variety of ways, as you all know, people get to Worcester Airport, depending on where they're coming from, and one of them is what we call the Auburn-Worcester route. For traffic modeling purposes, to be very conservative, we estimated that 50% of all the traffic, based on the service that JetBlue is currently proposing, if it came by way of Auburn, it would be less than 1% of the total vehicle trips that Barry talked about on the Auburn-Worcester route, which is about 14,000 cars in a 24-hour period. Again, 50% of all the people who would come to JetBlue, based on the service that, schedule that they provided us, would be about 96 cars per day, and we certainly don't anticipate 50%, those 96 cars coming by way of Auburn. And JetBlue, we're, we're pleased, as I'm sure a lot of you are, that its starting service this, anticipating this November 2013, and it will be seven days a week to Fort Lauderdale and also Orlando, and there will be two arrivals and two departures. One early morning, actually, I'll give you the exact times, subject to change. Departure would be 8:00 AM in the morning, the afternoon arrival would be 3:22 PM, there'd also be an afternoon departure, which would be 4:05, and arrival at 10:17, and the good thing is that, that doesn't really conflict much with commuting times. Also, these are pretty much leisure travelers, so leisure travelers tend to stay four to five days, we anticipate, again, for modeling purposes, that 50% of them are actually going to park at Worcester Airport, and the others would pick up, drop off, remain home. JetBlue is currently proposing to fly an MBR 190, which is a 100-seat aircraft, so again, for modeling purposes, we're anticipating a load factor, that means how many of those 100 seats would be filled, at 80%. And leisure travelers, travelers are traffic modeling, people tell me to estimate, assume 2.5 people per car, unlike a business traveler, which is- is usually one person per car. So based on those statistics, we're anticipating, again, if 50% of them come by way of Auburn-Worcester, that's 96 vehicle trips per day. And I think, you know, Barry and I have worked closely together, in addition with Julie Jacobson, the town manager, on traffic and on the CMR- CMR-PC Regional Plan Worcester Mobility Study. So the message is, people will find their best way to get to Worcester Airport. And we'll work closely with Barry in terms of keeping up, in terms of reporting, and happy to come back at any time. So if you've got any questions.
Just one question, are they non-stop flights?
I believe they are. Yes, I believe they are. Yeah. It's all subject to change, and this is the schedule that they gave me, but...
Anything else? Do you have anything else?
I just want to say that, again, we've been working together on this since the announcement first came, and I have to say that Massport did reach out to me to let me know right away and actually to participate in the announcement with JetBlue. You know, there are -- the traffic impact is going to be so minimal. Using that 50% figure, when John says that's conservative, that truly is. With at least six routes that have been identified to the airport, the chances of 50% of the people only taking one route are slim. So, you know, that's -- we're trying to look at what the worst-case scenario would be.
Exactly.
You know, it's most likely going to be far less than that at the current schedule. Down the road, you know, if they're successful, which everyone hopes they're successful, that may still increase. And even if it does increase, we're still looking at a very insignificant traffic volume increase compared to the current 14,000 cars a day. And on the positive side, the other positive side, I should say, is JetBlue is just going to be a great opportunity for local businesses in Auburn. You know, it should hopefully draw some people to our -- to the mall, to the restaurants, to some of the businesses in Auburn. I mean, it can only be good for the region, in particularly for Auburn, because we do have a number of hotels that some of the other surrounding, immediately surrounding communities don't have, other than the city of Worcester. So I think that our business community, that the members I've spoken to are happy to see this opportunity. Many of our local business owners actually are looking for flights where they can use JetBlue in the future for their business purposes, although this is their leisure route. So we're looking forward to working with Massport. And Massport's been extremely easy to work with for us. And also, MassDOT, we just have a great relationship with them. Aside from this particular project, we do a lot of projects in town, as you know, 12 and 20, and so many different projects. And MassDOT has been great to the town of Auburn. We have a good relationship. Our DPW director is a former DOT employee as well. So Bill Coyle maintains those relationships. And I think when you have a strong partnership like that, you can foresee any issues that may happen. We're certainly not going to -- I wouldn't be, nor would I expect Massport or MassDOT to come back in a year and say, guess what, we have a problem. That's not the relationship we all have. We find out about things early on. But we're not anticipating anything negative. As a matter of fact, we're just looking forward to the positive impact on the community.
And two follow-up points to that. We've -- actually, I've worked with Barry to install approximately 80 signs on various roadways in the towns to Worcester Airport on those six routes that Julie mentioned to frankly keep people, someone made the point, keep them on the road so they don't get lost and wander off in the community. And something else that we're excited about is that Retrix is building a new fixed-based operator facility at Worcester Airport. That's essentially a general aviation fraternity for corporate jets. And we anticipate that will start construction in September. They're taking over for Swissport, and it'll be a first-class facility that attracts the kind of client that wants a good restaurant, that wants a good hotel. The pilots also kind of want that. So those are two really great things happening at Worcester Airport.
Maybe we should change the signs then and just route them down Southridge.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to extend the...
Motion to extend the airport signs for an additional year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you through the chair for taking that out of time.
Okay, we're going to go back to our Board of Selection items. We have gift acceptance to the Fire Department gift account and the amount of $50 from Dr. Makel. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Sir, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We have a request for a proclamation. Honeydew Donuts is celebrating their 40th anniversary this year. They're hoping for a citation to congratulate Mr. Bowen on his -- this event. Is there a motion?
Now, is this a 40th anniversary in Auburn or is this 40th anniversary of Honeydew in general?
It sounds like it's 40 years of Honeydew in general.
I feel, Madam Chair, and I'm not against proclamations, but I think we're beginning to overdo it just because a business is having an anniversary. A lot of companies that have anniversaries, and the value of a proclamation is depleted by something like this.
I guess I would just say we've kind of already set the precedent. We gave a 40th anniversary one to McDonald's. It's kind of be a slap in the face to another business not to do the same. So, I mean, if we were going to raise that question, it should have been done previously.
I would agree. You know, we might want to send a congratulatory citation and ask that they display it in their Auburn location.
Along with?
No, just, you know, the citation that we sent. Just a suggestion. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to prepare a citation for Honeydew Donuts 40th anniversary to be sent to Richard Bowen at Honeydew Donuts in Everett.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next item, do you have a calendar handy for me to look at? The next item we have is to vote our summer meeting schedule. It just appears that our agenda through the summer is getting smaller. We're having less license requests, less license applications. And we were considering doing one month, one meeting in the month of July, one meeting in the month of August, unless an application that we needed to take action on that would affect a business came in. So I'll open that up to discussion to see how members feel.
I would agree. Tonight, we've had several of the interviews tonight, which took a little bit of time, but I think overall, I think the agendas are starting to slow down a little bit. And I think that over the course of the summer, like most organizations, it starts to slow down. So, yeah, I would not be adverse to going with one meeting per month for July and August.
And many boards do that, you know, have a summer schedule. Like I said, unless there's an application before us that we need to take action, I don't want to hold up anyone's business or expansion of their business. Mr. Simonian?
Yeah, I guess I would just kind of, the same question that was just asked of the ZBA, why not just schedule the two meetings and cancel one if we don't need it?
We could do that, but we could do that with the understanding that we have a preference to schedule, you know, to schedule one meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, personally, I'd rather have two short meetings than one long one. That's my thought process.
It's under discussion.
If we had two meetings and we're out of here by 8:30 rather than one, where we were here till 10 o'clock, I'd certainly opt for the two if we're out of here by eight or 8:30.
Again, I think that the agenda is starting to slow up a little bit, where I don't think that even if we had a meeting, it wouldn't last till 10 o'clock. 8:30 would be the longest, and I don't think, as the chairman had noted, that there's not a lot of activity going on with licensing. Anything else on the agenda that was pressing, we could call a special meeting, but otherwise, one meeting for the month of July and one for the month of August would be suitable in my view.
I disagree. We can't predict what's going to happen, but that's my opinion.
Well, I was also taking into consideration that there may be members who are on vacation. So if this motion, if members agreed, I would be looking at the July 8th and the August 12th meeting unless that conflicts with vacations. I don't know if members have...
I would be away on vacation on July 8th.
You would be. She's looking.
I'm open to any other weeks during those two months.
Is that the second Monday?
Yeah, the July 8th is.
I'm sorry, we were just discussing the calendar. It might be for scheduling purposes, if you were going to choose one, it might be better to have the 20th, the 22nd, only because if you have the 8th, the 4th would be the normal date.
Yeah?
Both the 8th and the 22nd are the normal dates.
So the 8th and the 22nd are the normal dates, the getting the agenda, because we have a holiday. We would have to have, if we had any requests, they would have to be in earlier that week anyway. So there could, that would mean it could even be a lighter agenda. Or we could, oh, it's July. Can you, sorry. So we have the 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th of July. We could do it right in the middle on the 15th, or we could do the 22nd.
I would suggest if we're going to have one, that we hold it on what normally would be a meeting night.
On the 4th.
So if we're not doing it on the second Monday, that we do it on the 4th Monday.
Well, I know due to vacation and potential business travel, the last meeting of August and the last meeting of July, there's a good chance I won't be here.
You're saying the 22nd?
22nd and whatever that second meeting in August would be, there's a good chance I won't be here for that one either.
Through the chair, I would suggest, then, based on the conversation I just heard, maybe the 8th is the best because that is a normal...
No, Mr. Holstrom isn't available.
I'm sorry. Okay. Does the 12th of August work? That would be a normal, the 12th works?
Does the 12th of August work for everyone for an August meeting?
Yes, it does.
For what?
August 12th.
Off the top of my head, I have to say, yeah, I'm not sure. I know August is pretty...
Well, that's a regular scheduled meeting, too. What, I keep screwing you up. So July, we have to just, first, before we choose, is there a motion to schedule one meeting per month?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Simonian is opposed. So, again, if a license application comes in that we need to take action on, we'll meet more frequently. But we also have to take into consideration, there's advertising time for those applications as well. So generally, they're not till the end of the month. So is August 12th work for everyone as of right now? And so we have August 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. The 8th doesn't work for Mr. Holstrom. The 22nd doesn't work for Mr. Simonian. We can either... Yeah. Did I say August?
You said August.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make it on the 15th and make it the 3rd?
We can...
3rd Monday?
We can set our own schedule. Will that work for you?
If we had to have a second meeting, though, then they'd be back-to-back weeks.
No, it would be the 29th because we have the 5th Monday.
Okay.
Just so that we can get...
7/29?
No, 7/15, July 15th, July 29th if needed, and August 12th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on. We're back to town manager items, Civil War Grant Award.
Through the chair, I just wanted to update the board. I received grant documentation the other day that we had received the Civil War Grant and for $5,000. And if you recall, that was $5,000 grant with a match that had been provided by town meeting vote out of the cemetery perpetual care account for another $5,000, for a total of $10,000 to restore one of our Civil War monuments and hopefully potentially get a second one done, but the first one may use up the entire grant amount. So number one, I want to thank Senator Moore because he really went to bat for us on this grant and called me the other day to let me know that the grant was coming. And actually, I had just received the grant documents the day before. So I want to thank him for his help on that and want to thank the state and the State Veterans Department for working with us and getting this grant together. So we're going to be getting all the documentation together. We'll be working with DPW and Wayne Boomequist to get a company lined up and start the work on this. But Mr. Simonian, I think at the last meeting, you had asked for a, the town to look into with the Veterans Committee, some type of acknowledgement of 150th of Civil War. So I did go to the last Veterans Committee meeting and brought it up, and they're going to be looking into doing some type of a ceremony of some sort. So depending on how long this project takes, and I don't know what that timeline is yet, but perhaps maybe either to kick off the project or to conclude the project, if it's within this calendar year, we may want to have a ceremony around the monument. You know, it might be a good way to start it.
Will they keep the Historical Committee in the loop? Because I know, you know...
They invited the members of the Historical Committee to attend the last meeting, and they could not, but they will be discussing it again. So yes, they will be. So I just want to update you on that. Let's see. Also want to ask Adam Burney to speak on the next item, which is a request for the waiver of the building permit and ZBA fees for Habitat for Humanity project that the board had approved as a two-family on Homestead Ave. So if I could just turn to Adam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Julie said about a month ago or so, you folks met with Habitat for Humanity and talked about preference on one or two-family. And per your preference for the two-family, the Habitat for Humanity group is moving ahead with the local initiative project, which is a friendly comprehensive permit, per their discussion. And essentially, the local initiative project is a partnership between the town and the Habitat for Humanity to get this two-family built. So they're in the process of putting together the application materials to send into the state requesting approval by DHCD. As part of that, they're asking that the town waive building permit and comprehensive permit fees as their portion of the partnership. And so it would essentially be an in-kind donation by the town to Habitat for Humanity. We would be donating the services of my staff, clerical, and the building inspector in doing their inspections for no cost, basically, because the permit fees cover the inspection costs. And what this does is it sort of gives the town some skin in the game and gives us a little bit of a voice at the table on the process, which you've already had a little bit of. It's not an uncommon thing. Some towns, and I believe Wayland is the town that Habitat is working with, they donate land or a portion of cash. That's not something that we're able to do. So I did receive the request from Tim Ferment, the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. He was unable to attend today. It was a little bit of short notice, sort of vacation time, sort of across the country. So I'm here making the request on their behalf. And I don't think it would be a burden on the department, and I think it would sort of be a show of good faith that the town is interested in having this happen and interested in working with Habitat.
Mr. Burney, is this by a vote of our board or the zoning board of appeals? And if so, are you asking that we send in a letter of support to the...
The building permit fees are by vote of this board, and my best understanding is this board has the power to waive the application fees for the zoning board. If I'm incorrect, we can certainly approach the zoning board. That would honestly be a smaller portion of the fee cost. And again... of the fee cost. And again, the fees go towards administrative costs. They go back to the general fund, which the board of selection and the town manager have industry over.
So I'll entertain two separate motions. First, in regards to the waiver of the building permit.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Simonean?
What are, what are we looking at as far as the time commitment for what we're waiving? Just want to have a...
The time commitment?
Well, you said it covers the inspections, the staff.
Correct. I mean, the processing of the permit, which is done in-house, I mean, plan review is probably two hours of the building inspector's time. Processing and printing the permit is probably 30 to 45 minutes of clerical staff. Inspections, it really does vary based on project. But, you know, from a rough inspection, insulation, sheet rock, final inspection, all told, you're probably somewhere between a day to a day and a half worth of inspections spread over probably. It's a volunteer process. I think that they said that their houses are generally built over a six- to nine-month period. So you're probably looking at maybe a total, you know, even if we went really long and they did several step inspections, and, you know, we're talking maybe 20 hours all day over a nine-month period. And I wouldn't believe any of those would be more than two hours at a time.
Is there an average wait time if somebody needs an inspection done and they call or whatever?
In general, if someone were to call our office today, they would normally get an inspection tomorrow. Now, there are certainly extenuating circumstances, and if it were the incident that we had tonight on Swanson Road, our inspector went directly there.
Right, understood.
So someone who may have been scheduled tonight may have lost their inspection, which he would make up tomorrow. And again, barring any unforeseen circumstances with the inspector, we try to do it within 24 hours. It's definitely done within 72 hours, and they are prioritized. Roof inspections, you know, the roof's there, it's done. That's generally something that doesn't need to be done immediately. We do it as quickly as possible, but if it's a matter of a rough framing inspection or a roof inspection, the rough framing is generally prioritized by the inspector because that allows the project to continue.
Okay, thanks.
So anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And I'll entertain a second motion to waive the zoning board of appeals fee if that is before this board, and if not, include in that motion to send a letter to the zoning board of appeals in support of waiving those fees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burney. And did you have one last item?
I did. The chair has asked me to provide an update, great idea, on the Independence Day celebration, given that it's, I can't believe it, it's next week already.
Yes.
This month just flew. So I should have put it on the agenda, I apologize.
That's okay.
I had some relations coming up so fast. So if I could just take two minutes of your time and just remind everybody, it is scheduled for Wednesday, July 3rd, with a rain date of Friday, July 5th. Starting with a parade at 5:00, that's going to start at the Packard Chog Elementary School, and go into the Pappas Recreation Complex, which is where all the events are being held. So again, it's at the Dr. Martha and Dr. Arthur Pappas Recreation Complex, starting at 5:00 PM with a parade from the Packard Chog School into the complex. 5:30, a brief, very brief speaking program just to kick it off. From 6:00 to 9:30, we have two bands playing in the pavilion, trying to get different kinds of music. So one's going to go from maybe 6:00 to, say, 7:30, quarter of eight, and then the next one from 8:00 to 9:30. And then at 9:30, the fireworks start. Then in between there, from 6:00 to 9:00, 9:30, we have vendors with food and products for sale. We have activities and games for children. There's actually petting zoo and pony rides. And then again, the fireworks at 9:30. We have three shuttles that will be running to bring people into and out of the complex this year. And we had some issues last year at Lemansky where it had been held, just trying to get enough people in there. Parking ends up being on the, out in the neighborhoods, and it's, parking was a bit of a challenge. So we have an excellent parking plan in place this year. We will be notifying those streets where we're allowing either no parking or one side only parking, or residence-only parking. So there is a plan in place, and through Code RID, we will be notifying just those streets that are impacted. The parking plan will be put up on our website this week, and you will see that we have parking and partners that are working with us, number one, the mall. Auburn Mall is allowing the shuttles to launch from Auburn Mall. So we'll be running a full-size bus, WRTA bus, from Auburn Mall up to the senior center, picking up anyone who wants to leave from the senior center, going down into the Pappas complex. There'll be another shuttle that will run the loop direct, actually, from the mall to the complex, and a third shuttle that will run the loop from the Packard Chog Elementary School into the complex and up to the senior center. So there are multiple ways to get in and out of there. Just a word of warning on the logistics, as always, it's much easier to get people into an event than it is to get them out. Just because we have shuttles or buses doesn't mean they can fly over the cars. They've still got to stay in that traffic. So the first bus is out of there, just like if you're in your car, will be slow-going because there's a lot of people leaving. But by dispersing the parking, it should be a better situation than we've had in the past. And for those who want to wait for the shuttle, we'll just have to wait until that parking initial clears out, and the buses will go back until the very last person is out of the complex and into their vehicle. There's a lot of handicapped parking there this year. We found that there's been a high demand for handicapped parking in the past, so we've added additional handicapped parking spaces. We also have a handicapped porta toilet in addition to additional toilets that will be put there, porta toilets. And the Pappas complex has a great handicapped, accessible walkway for people to get to the concert. As far as viewing, you can view from any of the fields. We encourage people to bring chairs and blankets. No umbrellas will be allowed. We don't want anything put into the ground, but again, that's something, you wouldn't want that anywhere. It's at night, there shouldn't be any reason for an umbrella anyway, and it does hamper people's views when you have an umbrella. So we'd rather no umbrellas in the surface. And on the artificial turf, people can certainly go on the artificial turf. We're just restricting, you won't be able to bring food onto the turf, but you can bring water, clay liquids, and watch the fireworks from there. And the shuttle service is free. Again, the WRTA has donated the bus to us. We are just paying for the driver, so it's a very minimal cost. It comes out of the budget that we have for this special event that approved by town meeting. And again, everything's going to be online with a Code RID call just to those streets that are impacted by the parking. So again, July 3rd, approximately 5:00 to 9:30 PM to the fireworks. The fireworks are probably about 20 minutes. And then by 10 o'clock, everybody should be cleared out and out.
How is the parking going to be enforced? I'm just thinking of the congestion and if people do park where they're not supposed to.
We have police details at the critical streets. We have signage. First of all, we'll have signage. We have the maps. We have things online. And then we do have details that will be circulating the area where the parking is. We're using cones, signage, and barriers. So it's, we had an elaborate plan in place last year for the Mass and for the orchestra, and thankfully, we didn't need it. You know, I wish we had had more people, but with the weather, it was tentative there, and it ended up being sunny. But we did have a plan in place for up to 3,000 cars, and we're using that Civil War plan here. I would say that the plan for this location is actually, there's been more time put into this than at Lemansky because we have more options. We have lots that you can spread the cars from, versus there is onsite parking, but the more cars you can get to park offsite, the better your traffic flow is going to be. So we do have the Packard Chog Elementary School, the senior center, the Auburn Mall, the former VNA lot, and, I'm sorry, there was a fifth lot as well. So there are actually more parking spaces now than we had previously and more handicapped spaces. Inside itself, we're trying to focus on giving the spaces inside. We have antique cars in the parade, so they will be put way up in the back parking space because we don't want cars in and out where there's a lot of people walking. You really don't want cars going through there. So the antique cars will be stationary once the parade is done. Vendors cars will be stationary, and then we've got a series of handicapped parking, and we need a bus turn around as well.
Thank you.
So I want to thank the mall, too, for providing their parking lot to us. We're trying to do a lot of work with the mall to, you know, again, we're trying to encourage people who come here for these events, you know, whether they're from in-town or not, to utilize our other local businesses. So we're always willing to work with local businesses, but the malls have been great making this available to us. And the WRTA as well in giving us the shuttle. Apparently, it's a brand-new bus that they've just put online, and they were looking forward to the opportunity to show it off. So we're thrilled.
Thanks.
So that is, and I want to thank all the volunteers. There's a lot of people who were involved in planning this, quite a few. And this planning goes on for several months. So everyone's really done a good job, and we're looking forward to it. Now we can just all cross our fingers for good luck on Wednesday evening.
Absolutely. Do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
We have no tabled items. Is there any public comment?
Do you have the initial public comment list?
I hand that to Sharon when I'm done because it has to be part of the record.
There was something, and I wrote it down, and now I can't find it on the paper.
Sharon, do you have the public comment sheet, please?
I'm trying to remember who made public comment. Maybe it was Jod, but if not, so be it.
That's okay. It just becomes part of the record for the evening. Waiting for that. We have the minutes of October 22nd and November 5th. Are there any corrections or omissions? The chair will accept them as written. And here is a sign-in sheet for public comment.
Oh, sorry. I can't remember what it was. My fault. I wrote it down somewhere. I can't find it, so...
Do you need a minute before we adjourn?
Nope. I apologize. No worries. I don't want to hold us up anymore.
We're fine. If you need a minute.
Nope, that's fine. It's here somewhere. I'll wait two weeks.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you. Good night.